That leaves us with the pleasure of inviting councillor Richard Stanley of Chelmsford Borough Council to come and talk to us. Okay. We're just equipping him with the headset a second, so for those of you watching, apologies for the delay. It is quite interesting though, because I mean, you know, with me working on, not just with Gloucestershire, but obviously looking across the country at different scenarios, literally from Northumberland down to Devon and Somerset. There's the number of times I see people thinking that it's A&E that they've got to basically go through. You know, even people who've experience of using the services still are drawn to that effectively. Perhaps reflects on the degree to which we need to help people understand there are different entry points, you know, for help. Hello councillor, come on, nice to meet you.
Yeah, good to meet you all too.
Yeah, so just to sort of get the introductions going, obviously you've heard, because you've been here once we introduced everybody. The format is effectively in this situation is an opportunity for you to talk to the panel here, who are people who are all involved in looking at solutions in one way, shape or form. And how do we continually improve the services for the people of Gloucestershire? So it's an opportunity really to sort of put across them what you want them to think about.
Brilliant, thank you.
So, down to you.
I'll try and raise solutions. I have come with probably more issues than solutions, but we'll perhaps see if we can work through that, once I've gone through it all. And so thank you all, and councillor Richard Stanley, Chelmsford Borough councillor and the council's lead member for health and wellbeing. I'd just like to thank you all for the work that you do with our NHS and for allowing me the opportunities to speak to you all today on behalf of the residents of Chelmsford Borough. Before I begin, I heard with great interest yesterday that the Health Secretary had announced that A&E services will not be being closed at Cheltenham. Surely it was never under consideration that A&E would be completely closed in Cheltenham? And my understanding was that what residents are really concerned about is the risk of an A&E downgrade. And I think that feels like potentially that is the area that I wanted to explore. When the public are told that an A&E is staying by a Health Secretary, many will take on face value that that means it's being saved intact. So what I would really ask for, perhaps not from yourselves, but from the trust as a whole, is some clarity for the public around what the process is actually looking to achieve and what those possible options are. For those of you that may not be familiar with the details of Chelmsford Borough, I thought it would be helpful to have a map, and as you can see from the map, we are a large geographical area surrounding Gloucester and Cheltenham. We've got Minsterworth, Hainham, Brockworth and Whitcombe to the south. Also got areas like Twining, Ashchurch, Teddington, Snow's Hill in the north. And this huge geographical spread does present many challenges, particularly when we're looking at accessibility to services such as vital services like healthcare. Chelmsford Borough has a population of 96,000 and our housing need assessment indicates a requirement for at least 10,195 more homes, which is circa 30,000 extra residents by 2031. ONS data confirms that our population has grown by 2,267 in the last 12 months, and this will create an additional demand on both Cheltenham and Gloucester's A&E services. We're far from a sleepy rural borough. We are the fastest growing borough outside of London and our growth rate was two and a half percent last year alone. There's been rapid growth in Brockworth, Bishopsgrove, Chelmsford Town and Churchtown. We're expecting a garden town at Ashchurch with an additional 10,000 homes. Cheltenham is currently the closest full A&E to the proposed garden town, so again, this all needs to be considered. You'll see from the maps that for the majority of our residents, Cheltenham is the closest A&E facility. So residents are telling us that maintaining that full consultant-led A&E is important to them for the reasons that I shall come on to now. With the current A&E provision as it stands, the additional demand can be spread between both sites, depending on their proximity to the residents. In locations such as Churchtown, which have a close proximity to both Cheltenham and Gloucester, residents can be directed to the least busy service, and that provides flexibility for the NHS. Residents have shared some of their personal experiences of A&E with me, and I thought it would be really valuable to share those with you. A lady called Mandy wrote to me, she said, "My daughter is 35, she had a brain surgery in Birmingham in April. Sometime after being discharged, she contracted meningitis and was taken to Gloucester by ambulance. It was after 8pm. This was Easter Sunday. The ambulance drop-off was incredibly busy and congested, so busy that they were queuing to get their patients out of their ambulances and into hospital. Once out of the ambulance, patients were queued up in corridors on trolleys. My daughter is very light and touch sensitive, but the trolley that she was placed on was in a very busy bright corridor, which was often getting bumped into by people as they passed by. She stayed on the trolley in the corridor for four hours before she was finally moved to a cubicle. The lady behind us had suspected appendicitis and was also very distressed. She saw the doctor at 1am, who then said there were no beds in the hospital. My daughter would be moved to a quieter corridor to await a bed. At 10am, she was moved to a day outpatient bed to wait for a bed on a ward. Finally, at 4pm, she was put on a ward and then given some antibiotics 20 hours after we called for an ambulance. She stayed in hospital for two weeks. When I spoke to Mandy, she said she could see no benefit to having been sent to Gloucester and instead would have been preferred to send to Cheltenham. Instead, she witnessed more pressure on ambulance staff and hospital staff and felt her daughter's care was worse than it would have been. An added impact of being treated in Gloucester for two weeks was that visiting her daughter was much more difficult. The additional miles and time taken each day added to the financial and emotional pressure on her and her family at an already difficult time. And it would have been less stressful for her if her daughter had been able to be treated in Cheltenham, which was closer to home. Mandy noted that at Birmingham, where her daughter was first treated, she was able to get a weekly parking pass. Cheltenham would have been close enough for her to have visited by bus, but with Gloucester, she had to take the car but was not permitted to purchase a weekly pass, so had to pay a daily rate, which she found difficult to afford. Some of the issues I share here, such as the backing up of ambulances, the lack of beds, leads into the stacking of patients on trolleys and corridors, delays in treatment and the long distance added costs for the family and loved ones to the visit. Further downgrades for A&E at Cheltenham raise more concerns for her. As you'll see from the drive time and public maps that I've provided, that ease of access to our hospitals is dependent on travelling by car. The impact of those journeys, not just isolated to admission and discharge, large parts of the county are extremely reliant upon cars, and as you can see, those journey times for many are more than 45 minutes to access an A&E treatment. I'd also stress that those journey times that I provided are based on an ideal travel conditions. They take no account of waiting for a bus, traffic congestion, weather conditions or the times of day when bus services may operate or be reduced. These are the factors that may or may not be measured, but they matter to the public and affect accessibility in some cases and may act as a deterrent for people to access appropriate medical treatment. I'll just say in aside here, my dad hates going to hospital and when we ever need him to go, which is quite frequent, it's like getting, well, horse to water. But I can imagine, where they live in Shropshire and Telford's A&E has just been downgraded and he'll now have to go to Shrewsbury, and we had to fight to get him to Telford. I can't even imagine how we'd get him to Shrewsbury. Anyway, I digress slightly, but Chelmsford Borough has a number of wards with higher than average number of elderly residents and has areas of significant deprivation. It is those residents who will be hardest hit by any downgrade. Reliance on public transport to access services is particularly relevant to those on low income and the elderly. I was recently contacted by an elderly resident who fell and had a head injury. An ambulance was called, it was late at night and he was taken to Gloucester. The journey would usually have taken around 15 minutes to Cheltenham or 30 minutes to Gloucester, but the ambulance needed to drive slowly because of his injury, so it took 60 minutes to get to Gloucester. On discharge, they needed to return home by taxi because the bus was not running. As pensioners, they could not afford the £34 taxi home and had to borrow the money from the patient's sister to pay for it, as they did not have enough money in their account. They found this stressful and it added embarrassment to an already difficult situation. In the case of my own 12-year-old daughter, I was directed to Cheltenham by 111, although Chelmsford Hospital was closer, only to be told on arrival that she would need to be seen at Gloucester due to her age. This added an extra 50 minutes to our journey, having already driven 20 minutes to get to Cheltenham from Bishopsgrove. The children's waiting area was incredibly busy. Families from all over Gloucestershire were being directed to Gloucester and I witnessed one parent leave A&E after deciding that waiting was not worth it. Rightly or wrongly, they self-diagnosed their child impatiently. We waited for treatment. It wasn't successful that evening, which was just one of those things, but surgery was booked to come back to Gloucester for the next morning. I'll say now that I can see the merits of centralising some elective treatment. My daughter's care was excellent and the surgeon was wonderful. The treatment we received at Gloucester was good. There is a difference though between centralising those specialised treatments that are planned and accident and emergency, where the location is essential for access. When we came back for that specialist surgery, it was cancelled twice due to high workload and insufficient staff. Each time was cancelled, we'd taken time to travel from Bishopsgrove to Gloucester and she'd taken time off school. Even a short round trip is over an hour. My daughter was left sobbing on the third visit when she was told her surgery would be cancelled again. Yet we were fortunate, I own a car, did not need a taxi or to rely on bus services, which would have taken an hour and a half each way to get to Gloucester, making it a three-hour round trip and costing £68 in taxi costs. I just wonder if the trust have considered the impacts of patients when they've centralised these services? I'll simply say this, if the issue is staffing and resources, let's campaign for more staffing and resources. Centralising A&E to Cheltenham is simply alienating the trust from the public and offering a sticking plaster solution. For me and my daughter, it was inconvenient and frustrating at times, and it was upsetting for my daughter. But as I say, we owned a car and we managed. It's far more difficult for elderly couples in Abura on a fixed pension. If I had been a single parent or if my daughter had had a physical or mental health issue, it would have been incredibly difficult and may not have managed. Our most vulnerable residents are the ones who need to be able to access services easily and Chelmsford Borough residents will find this incredibly difficult due to poor bus services in Gloucestershire. The final two residents I want to talk about, when it comes to reducing services at A&E, feel that if that had happened, it would have resulted in more than just added stress and inconvenience. They say it would have cost them their lives. First is Murray, he's a dad, has a young family, wrote to me to say that in July he woke up in agony with chest pains. An ambulance arrived in what felt like minutes and he was taken to A&E and rushed to Cheltenham A&E. Again, this took only minutes. Murray suffered a cardiac arrest and had a heart attack. Murray went on to write that had the journey been made to Gloucester instead of Cheltenham, he doesn't believe he would have survived. Nigel, a support worker, also shared his experiences and said that a man that he cares for that's in his twenties and has a history of awful seizures, he is not mobile and non-verbal. He has a vagus nerve system, which means that himself and a colleague have a protocol for when he starts to twitch. They called the GP, who was sent out. The doctor advised that they call an ambulance or drive him to A&E. Cheltenham was their nearest, so they took him straight there. He said he felt sick the whole way driving into Cheltenham and with chronic worry as to whether or not he should have taken the ambulance, but he didn't know what to do for the best. As they arrived at A&E, he had a massive seizure and the colleagues administered Medazolam. In the A&E reception, he was rushed into Rhesus, where he spent the afternoon. The gentleman was in a coma for four hours and spent several weeks at hospital. Again, Nigel felt that if they'd been forced to go to Gloucester, either by car or ambulance, the young man would have died. I share these experiences of Chelmsford Borough residents, and although I hope that as part of the consultation process, you will hear many more concerns of local residents, they are clear to me that they want a full A&E at Cheltenham. I've received no contacts asking me to downgrade the A&E at Cheltenham. Every single contact asked for A&E at Cheltenham to be maintained with a full consultant base. I do hope the consultation is not a done deal and that the responses to the consultation are taken seriously and considered by the trust. It is critical that the consultation is undertaken properly and as proactively as possible. Residents in Chelmsford Borough would expect this every bit as much as Cheltenham and Gloucester, as they are equally affected and potentially more affected in some aspects due to the challenges on accessibility that I've mentioned at length. As far as I can tell, there hasn't been much proactive direct engagement with Chelmsford Borough Council. Although I do thank the trust for speaking to borough councillors on Monday of this week. This was done at our request. The council are in a good position to provide information and evidence based on the type of detailed information needed around public transport, demographics, deprivation and our future projections for population growth. That could have seen a healthy working relationship directly with the district to help shape workable plans as part of a meaningful consultation process. Stats on lists of wards with higher than average elderly populations, areas of deprivation, low income, et cetera. During Monday's meeting with the trust, I did raise one question, which touched on Telford, and I said that the residents of Shropshire had made very clear they did not want their A&E downgraded, but it happened anyway. So my question was, what do residents actually have to say to get the trust to listen and accept that residents do not want their A&E service downgraded in any way? I didn't get an answer that I was satisfied with, that those voices would be heard, and I think it was something along the lines of it's the trust's decision. It is the trust's decision, but those voices do need to be heard. I think I'll probably leave it at that, but I'd welcome any solutions that I can offer really and any questions that you may have.
Okay, well, the first thing is, the good news is that we're not at the consultation stage yet. So there's plenty of time to influence what solutions might look like and then what will eventually be consulted upon. But let me hand over to panel members here, have you got questions or anything that you want to say with regards to, yeah?
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Very interesting and very powerful presentation. If you're a local councillor, you're used to dealing with the particular and the general. So my question to you is, what kind of data do you think that we should use when we have to make decisions between...
So my question is, what kind of data or how do you think we should approach decisions that we have to make that have to balance the needs of the local, Chelmsford in this particular instance, with the needs of the global Gloucestershire as a whole? How do we decide? Because in one sense, you know, it's obvious, everybody would like a hospital on their street corner.
Of course.
We all accept that's not possible. But decisions have to be made at what level to respond to need? And what kind of data do you think that we should be using to make those decisions? How do we decide between meeting the needs of the residents of Chelmsford and meeting the needs of the residents of Gloucestershire as a whole?
I don't necessarily see that they're mutually exclusive in the sense that, for example, that case with my daughter, where we then went to Gloucester for our treatment, you had the whole of Gloucestershire's children in that A&E. And actually, and again, maybe this comes down to resourcing, which to me feels like the real elephant in the room. But if we'd have been seen at Cheltenham, for example, that would have then been better for the Gloucester residents also, because maybe there would have been less congestion in that A&E. Perhaps that other couple may not have walked out when they saw that they were, you know, behind a queue of people from Bishopsgrove, Chelmsford, Stroud potentially, I've no idea. So in terms of stats and data, as a councillor, we rely very much on our officers. So I would be very happy for, and the officers who helped me today made very clear that they want to be involved and they want to provide the data that could be helpful in terms of, like I say, demographics. I mean, we have a lot of elderly residents within Chelmsford Borough, but me saying a lot means nothing. You need to know the exact specifics and that's where I think, you know, speak with the council officers, they'll be able to provide all that detailed data that perhaps I as a councillor would be, you know, party to but not necessarily involved in collating and producing. I hope that helps.
What?
I'll ask, similar sort of question, Richard, I guess, how do we work with you around some of these transport issues? So I notice even if we did nothing, it's still over 45 minutes for some of your residents to get into the hospital.
Yes.
You could argue it's too long already.
Yes.
Whatever changes come out of this process, we're going to need to do something to improve that. So I guess as a system, how do we work better with you to address and campaign for some of that improved public transport?
Absolutely, and I guess to a certain extent, is it the NHS's responsibility to make sure there's a good bus service? Absolutely not, but in terms of the knock-on effects, in terms of your decision-making, yes, it absolutely does have an impact on, you know, potentially on mental wellbeing and potentially even life and death in some instances. I guess we all need to work together, as I touched on a moment ago. We provided the information there as to the issues and actually those graphs I gave you, I sort of winced when I looked at some of them, because we all know that in reality it takes more than 30 minutes to get from, you know, the far side of one area than to another when there's, you know, actual traffic. The other thing that I haven't provided stats on, and again, maybe we need to look at this in more depth, is how much our county grows when we have festivals. I mean, the population of Cheltenham on a normal time, or even Bishopsgrove, isn't the same as when we have race week or literature festival. And again, we're going to have those huge pinch points and I'm sorry, I've just given you another issue rather than a solution. But, you know, they're all relevant factors. I don't know is the answer. I think we just need to, perhaps like maybe even when we're working with the bus service, what funding they might need to provide some of those additional services and how we find the money for those things.
Okay. Yep.
Talking from there as well.
Thank you. So the transport issue comes up. The thing, I think we need to describe to people what we're doing about crowding in Gloucester, that people have noticed. We can see the investment we've made in Cheltenham ED and that news for waiting area and other services there. I think we need to do a good job of describing what we're doing for Gloucester. I just wanted to come to the emergency pathway, if I may. The thing I shouldn't forget is my paramedic colleagues. So when we think about those emergency conditions, and you've described two examples, you're from Chelmsford. That the paramedics can be on scene very quickly, you gave one example where they were, and treatment can start, assessment can start. So when some people have concerns about travel time, we can remind them that although the hospital may be geographically distant, paramedics may be nearby and may already start treatment. The other two pathways just help me think about how to describe some of the issues as well, because the paramedics in one case picked up a case where the diagnosis was perhaps a little more straightforward and they were able to take them directly to a specialist. So they're taken to Cheltenham, where we have our cardiac services and that can be managed there. The other pathway didn't sound ideal, far from it, but it suggests some of the difficulty you can have in diagnosis for people who are unwell, but what I might call undifferentiated. And the advantage for that group of patients is that we ask somebody who is senior, with enough experience and the right skill set to assess them, so that we can find out what it is that's causing the unwell early in their pathway. So how do I ensure that our emergency services can provide patients with somebody with that right skill set to make a diagnosis and give those early antibiotics? Can I do that for the whole of Gloucestershire on a number of different sites? Or can we centralise some of that experience whilst still caring for the urgent unwell, closer to home? So those are two examples that I think we can use to help describe some of the issues, because that senior decision-maker, that I call them, that experienced practitioner who is trained to look at the undifferentiated unwell, is a thing that I really struggle to find. And describing that staffing resource, I could also talk about the efforts we've gone to, but I have, as an example, approximately seven registrars to cover emergency services on two sites. And how do I stretch them with those issues?
And I don't have an easy answer for you. One thing that did jump out at me with the gentleman with the head injury and the ambulance having to drive particularly slowly, it wasn't so much the case of, like you say, he could be getting treatment in the ambulance, but it did strike me that that journey was made hugely longer than it potentially had to have been, which then has a knock-on effect for ambulances. That's presumably then one ambulance that's taken out for an entire hour as opposed to potentially, you know, could it have been, you know, if you see, in terms of a resource, that resource is then being used with one patient, where if it could have been at a closer centre such as Cheltenham, it may not have then, well, it wouldn't have taken anywhere near as long, so I don't know. That jumped out at me, that we assume that when someone's being taken to Gloucester instead of Cheltenham, that it's blues and twos and it maybe adds an extra 15, 20 minutes, but in that particular case, it added a significant lot longer.
Again, so a quick response on that is designing our health system so that we avoid secondary transference. So you present to the right service first time, because that investment in a longer journey on the first trip may pay off if you're avoiding any second trip to another service where escalating care. So we need to describe that and those benefits.
I accept what you're saying there. And I guess the other frustration I took from that story was that actually financially, that had an impact for those people, which yes, okay, he was fine and he was healthy and he was happy with his service, but it led an extra pressure for that return journey. So whether there is a solution there that could be looked at in terms of how we get people back from those locations when they're perhaps on low income and are a lot further away from their home than usual, I don't know. Again, whether that comes, that obviously comes down to funding and money, but it felt like that could be looked at.
There's a transport theme, I think.
Yes, massively, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Can I just pick up on that? And I'm interested in your thoughts, because I think as clinicians, we tend to think, talk quite a lot, and rightly, about transport of the old patients to the hospital or as Rob says, ideally to the right place first time.
Yeah.
But we forget about the transport implications for members of the family. Now, that's not anything that is unknown. It happens if we had one hospital, two hospitals, three hospitals, there would still be transport issues for families visiting patients in hospital. But I think it's important that we take on board the impact on members of the family, visitors, relatives when they are visiting people who, you know, to be honest, if you're sick in an ambulance, you probably don't care where you end up, as long as you go to the right place and get good care. But it's your loved ones who then have the trouble and difficulty of visiting you if you're far from home. And that may be an area where there's more work to be done between local authorities and the NHS in terms of transport solutions. And I don't know, I'd be interested in your thoughts as a councillor on that.
Yeah, thank you for raising that, because yeah, it did feel to me as though it's almost like we're very focused on the health outcome, but actually that health outcome is also impacted by whether that person can maybe have a family member pop in and see them that day. And if, I'm grateful that you've understood my point really, because that was exactly what I was trying to get across in terms of, it also builds that kind of frustration then and resentment from the public of, well, you took our service away from Cheltenham and then there is almost an idealised then, if I was in Cheltenham, all these things would have been wonderful and everyone could have popped in. And I am sure that is not exactly the case, but certainly in terms of when we are thinking about that location and transport and all those added pressures, particularly on those who are elderly and on low incomes, whether there is a different criteria that means that if you are in a certain bracket, you are then able to be seen at a closer centre or you're given the choice of whether to be seen at a specialist centre or a closer centre. I don't know whether practically that works, but in terms of for, you know, the elderly and those on low income, those with disabilities, you may decide actually for family reasons, they prefer to be in their closer hospital. Whether that's possible and feasible, I don't know, but I would love it if it was. Whether that then opens up a whole new kind of worms and makes what you're hoping to do in centralisation more difficult, I don't know. But I think the simplest solution is just to say, let's keep the full A&E at Cheltenham as the residents want. And if the issue is staffing, then let's sort that out, rather than trying to fix staffing by doing something else.
Just, I don't mind me chucking a question or two in here, just quickly. It's really interesting, and first of all, I commend you on the fact that you've come here. here on a really good exploratory kind of basis rather than what sometimes happens where people come in and kind of almost accuse effectively, which, you know, gladly isn't happening. You raised some really interesting points about different things that are difficulties and have been seen to be problems within the system. And one of the things you mentioned earlier on is about the problem of staffing. And unlike my colleagues here, I work right the way across the UK and particularly in England. So what I'm seeing is a national problem with staff, which you're probably aware of because it's been well documented by the BBC and other news channels. And I'm seeing everywhere across the country, an issue for all health bodies in trying to balance how they create ease of access for people to services, ranging from specialist services through to accidents and emergency, the whole spectrum versus how do we get the staff to actually make that feasible? It's not something that's easily solved and everybody's got a similar problem. And I know from what you described with regards to the Shrewsbury-Telford scenario, which I've had some understanding of, is that again, they had that same problem to try and solve and perhaps didn't reach it in the way that everybody would be happy with. What I can say is from what I've heard is that my colleagues here would like to try and find something that people can be happy with, but are confronted with the fact they're not going to be able to keep everybody happy. So looking at it as a neutral, I think that one of the things that would be really helpful and this is something that you might have an interest in, is how do we get public representatives like yourself involved in looking at and working out how we get equitable solutions in a situation where ideally, where what we would regard, everybody would regard as ideal is probably not possible to actually achieve? And have you got any views about how that might be done? And would you be interested in making a commitment to actually taking some kind of lead for Chelmsford Borough Council on looking at that?
I'm definitely happy in terms of taking the lead and I think it possibly comes back to what we touched on earlier around that two-way dialogue and it not feeling like it's something that's being done to people. But it does also need that people feel they can influence the final outcome. If it feels as though the decision's already been made and we are just being led down a path to an end goal, then people are going to lose faith that they have that voice in that process. So I think it would be really good to have, I think we've on Gloucestershire have laid out the concerns from what I've seen already. I think it would be really clear to have, these are the potential options that are currently on the table and this is, you know, and have a genuine, this is what we're looking at. I have filled in some of the surveys and did feel I was being led with the questions, truthfully. You know, if you ask someone, would you like to see an expert, of course, well, I know some of us are sick of experts, but generally, most of us, if we're asked, do we want to see an expert, will say yes. If you then ask them, do you want to keep your service local, they'd say yes. So you can ask those questions in however you want to get whatever answers you want and that isn't how we should do it. It needs to be truly open, truly cross-working. And if it's done like that, then I think we're far more likely to get an outcome that everyone's happy with.
Okay. I mean, it'd be interesting to spend some time with you and look at that issue of questions and how we work with them is a particularly important concern. And it'd be quite interesting to see what you would come up with with regards to solutions in managing those.
I'm happy to come back on that. Yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? Yeah, Mark?
I just wanted to pick up on another point, which actually related to your daughter's experience and apologies for the many cancelled.
No apology necessary.
But as a strategy for the way we would like services to work in the future, that's exactly what we would like to happen. And again, I'm interested perhaps in just a personal reflection, which is the idea that you may be seen in an emergency on either site, ideally by a consultant or another senior decision-maker. And the decision may be, well, yes, you do need an operation, but actually it doesn't need to be done tonight. In fact, we try to avoid doing operations in the middle of the night for obvious reasons, but you could come back tomorrow or maybe in the next day or two and to wherever the appropriate specialist is.
Yes.
And that's part of the centres of excellence model that we've been talking about. And I'm just interested, despite the fact that it didn't work terribly well for your daughter, you did seem to be relatively positive about it as a concept.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of, so for example, cancer treatment, I can see would absolutely make sense to have a centralised cancer specialist centre. It does still come back to the things I've touched on in terms of accessibility. It's all well and good me saying it when I can pop into the car and, you know, or someone could drive me, but I guess we need to keep that accessibility in the forefront of our mind, but certainly in terms of specialist centres, I can see it. You raised something that I hadn't actually thought of, which is when we first were directed to Cheltenham or even potentially could have gone to Chelmsford, the initial work that was carried out in an A and E could have really probably been carried out on any one of those sites. I'll tell you the story, she basically had some earrings on too tight, got them trapped in her earrings, was too embarrassed to tell anyone and the skin had started to grow over, so they needed to be pushed back out. If we'd have gone to Cheltenham and been seen that, well, we went to Cheltenham, but if we'd have been seen that evening, they could have probably said then, do you know what, we're not going to be able to get these out and likely possibly Chelmsford also. So, yeah, I guess in terms of what you've just asked, yeah, there is that option that you could have the initial starting point at one of those locations and then a later treatment at a second stage. I don't think that necessarily would be a disaster for a lot of people. I just am really clear that it needs to be that it's a full consultant making that call, not necessarily, I mean, in that instance, it didn't need to be, but there will be instances when it needs that consultant and it needs that professional diagnosis and I don't want us to lose that really. And that would be my caveat to whatever I've just agreed to.
But you're just reiterating what Robert said, which is the aim is to get you to the appropriate decision-maker first time.
Yes.
Which may be in the urgent or emergency situation. And then you may have a planned second appointment or operation in this case or whatever.
Yes.
Which would then be with the appropriate person, with the appropriate skill set.
Indeed.
But we don't want people bouncing around the system any more than people want to bounce around the system.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Because if you see two doctors and only needed to see one, then that first doctor or nurse or whoever actually could have used their time to see somebody else.
Indeed.
Richard, just, I don't know, sorry, has anybody else got a question? No?
Might make just a bit of a comment, sort of obviously thank you for sharing those experiences and I had the opportunity to visit the new GP practice in Chelmsford on Friday and that was my first visit and obviously saw the proximity to the hospital. And you've got some great facilities there and it was really just a sort of, I think we've probably covered it, but essentially saying how can we work in partnership with you and have your ideas on how you want to develop those local services for, sort of, because the majority of people are obviously seen in general practice when they have an urgent need and then you've got obviously Chelmsford Hospital near to you. And it was really, we've got a lot of expertise, you've got a lot of knowledge, how we can work in partnership to develop those services nearer to home in the first place.
I mean, I think certainly there's some follow-up to be done, so, and I'm more than happy and I'm sure there'll be other councillors and as I say, officers who are the experts actually, not so much the councillors, but don't tell the other councillors I said that. Certainly in a lot of areas they are. The other thing I would say is as well with Chelmsford Borough, as I showed you with that initial map, yes, there is that hospital at the north in Chelmsford, but a fat lot of good that is to someone down in Churchtown or wherever. So, you know, I think, and even for Bishop's Cleave generally, we can't go to Chelmsford for a lot of the things we need, so they're going to Cheltenham anyway. Or, you know, in the instance of my daughter, we're then directed on to Gloucester. And I do worry about the, there is obviously those merits to the centralising, but there is also that bottlenecking and we are losing some of that, you know, flexibility potentially during busy times like Race Week. You know, if centralising was absolutely the cure of all ills, then that situation with my daughter wouldn't have happened because paediatrics and childcare, we were sent to Gloucester, that was centralised and that caused a huge bottleneck. So I guess, as I said at the beginning, if the issue is staffing, then the issue is staffing and we can centralise all we like, but you need more people. And that comes down to government and funding. This potentially is rearranging some deck chairs and then we're going to still need more people at the end of that process.
Can I just make one comment? Thank you, Richard, because I think this has been very constructive and very helpful. But really just to emphasise the point, no decision has been made on Cheltenham A and E and it isn't just about A and E. We are talking here about urgent services across the whole of Gloucestershire and the community. And a lot of GPs do provide a lot of the emergency on-the-day stuff and not just in Chelmsford, but across the county. A lot of GPs in Gloucestershire do have pre-hospital emergency care experience, some also work in A and E. It's about getting all the services to join up better.
Yes.
I think that's the thing, rather than just getting too focused just simply on A and E.
Absolutely, and I think it's an emotive issue, so obviously then it's the issue that residents talk to me about and, you know, hence I'm here talking to you about it. But yeah, absolutely, there's a whole process going on and hopefully, you know, benefits all round really, but yeah, thank you, I take the point.
I'm conscious of time, closing thought from you and in relation to what you've just brought up, Will, is one of the things that I've seen, not just here in Gloucestershire, but in other areas of the country as well, is that that issue of centralisation, but also providing for in local communities in the manner that we've just talked about and using things like urgent treatment centres or urgent care centres. One of the problems that I see everybody having is educating the public about where they can go. And I see people spending a lot of money on trying to get the messages to the public. Would you have any views as to the way that we can actually educate the public about what they can access most efficiently?
I mean, in terms of educating the public, certainly, you know, social media and all those sorts of things are perhaps a way of reaching people, but I would also say that sometimes people go with what feels intuitive. And if we think we've got a perfect system, but the public don't understand it, then it isn't a perfect system. So, you know, we can educate all we like, but if the instinct of people, for whatever reason, is to go to their closest big hospital, their A and E, then that is going to be their instinct regardless of how much public education we put out there. That's my view.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily that they're doing it wrong, it's maybe we're not offering it in a way that they want to use.
But I'm also thinking about some of the things that the councils themselves find with things like social care elements of educating people, particularly with mental health, which of course you've got a big crossover with, councils have, with the health bodies, is that there must be a smarter way that people can come together and work together, combine budgets and resource, whether it be through different educational channels and other things, that the future generations are much more aware of what they can do, how and why, you know?
I think that's a really good idea and I think it's something that Chelmsford Borough have a good history of. So for example, our policing, the police are actually based within Chelmsford Borough Council and we share offices. That's enabled us to work much more closely with the police service within Chelmsford Borough. Obviously, there's still room for improvement, but it definitely helps. And I guess the more we work together, the more we can potentially look at ways that we can produce better outcomes, potentially even save money, but save money to produce an even better outcome.
Okay. Anything further from anyone? Richard, anything else you want to say just to close?
Only thank you all again and thank you for your time.
And thank you very much, it's been really constructive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, ladies and gents, so we've just come up to, I think, twelve-thirty, which is lunch break time. It feels like we're taking it early, doesn't it really, after only seeing one and a half people effectively through it? We will be coming back at one, for those who are watching online, we're going to take a forty-five minute break. We will come back then at one fifteen. I don't know if we've had any questions as yet from anybody outside, but there might be some, but if we have, we will try and address it during the course of the afternoon. So for those of you that might have submitted anything that you want us to address, we'll try and pick it up this afternoon if we can. Meantime, thank you all very much for participating so far and we'll see you back here at one fifteen.